Father, we once again thank you for another day in Ashland, Kentucky. We are thankful for our safe and successful 2017. As we begin a new year, we ask for wisdom and guidance and direction for this Board of Mayor and Commissioners, our City Manager, our Department Heads and our employees. We ask your blessing on our citizens and those in attendance today. And we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion received by the Agenda.
Second.
A discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose like sign. Received and followed minutes of our regular meeting of December 14th.
Second.
A discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose like sign. Parents report us. Commissioners?
I just want to share my gratitude to the folks that work in our water department for their efforts. I know the citizens appreciate the countless hours, cold weather, that they put themselves through to make sure we can have our taps flowing. So, I'm grateful. I know this commission is grateful. I know the public's grateful. I've heard many community leaders and businesses have brought them hot chocolate and coffee and doughnuts, and it means the world to them, and it just shows just how important we feel that they are, because they are critical to making our city successful. So, I appreciate that.
Thanks. I appreciate the citizens and the patience with all the breaks and all. Let me tell you, our water department is unbelievable. There are four crews, and these crews have been working 16-hour shifts. And they have to be on paid hours, or they would keep doing it, I can tell you, and we'd probably let them. But they're unbelievable. We drove, the manager and the engineer and I drove Pittsburgh last week in the snow, cold, on a city water plant situation we're working with. And the crews continued to send pictures of the brakes as they replaced them, as they repaired them, they were trying to fill them in. I will explain to you that it was probably in the teens or singles in Pittsburgh, about like it was here. And our guys were in three or four foot of water. Some of them had not sealed off yet, so the water, you know, 10, 12 inch lines. The water was pouring on them, and they had to use a lot of different measures to shut that water off. And they go above and beyond, there's no question about it. And to my knowledge, and I saw them several times, I drove around when I got back to look at what we were still working on. And our engineer, Ryan Eastwood, says they never complain. Now, they probably sit behind a back of how little pay they get for what they do, and it's probably true, and has all our employees from time to time for sure. But these guys have really done it for our community. And I know, I was with the water on Sunday, and I've already been to church, and my wife's getting ready to wash clothes and figuring out where to handle the water. It's a bad feeling, you all know that. I'm sure we have people here that suffer from it. But I did too, and all I did was check to see what it was and how long it would be. And they got on quick. I didn't talk to them directly, and I told the engineer, I said, "Look, I don't want any action that no other citizen would get." And I didn't, I didn't get it. But I didn't want it, and I just want to know, you know, how long we got to deal with this. But it's very difficult to survive. You know, you can get by the power for a while, but water's a big deal. And our guys know that, and they try to make sure we're inconvenienced at the least times possible. And I admire them so much for crawling down those holes in that mud in freezing weather to try to make sure they do it expeditiously. There's special people in our water utility department that repair. And I can't tell them how proud I am, and we're trying to recognize them. We give enough of them out of hole. The next meeting, we'll have them come in here. If they're on, they can't do that. And it's going to continue. And we got to our hotel and turn on TV, and everywhere in Pittsburgh, water was shooting up in the air. It's not just us, because we have a lot of lines that are 100 years old. A lot of these lines that we're breaking aren't. Sometimes they're not as good as the 100-year-old lines. But you get weaknesses in them sometimes, and I really worry about when we have a day like yesterday, because we have a fallout period. Many times, that's going to cause the leaks for you in your yard, your home, whatever. That's the worst part. When it freezes, you know, it swells up and stretches that line, and then when it falls out, sometimes that line can handle it. But those of you who have had, suffered from loss of water, thank you for your patience. We'll continue to battle them every day like every city in America is doing in this kind of weather. But remember, you told me workers, I know some restaurants took them all big slabs of ribs. They really prefer that over the coffee and doughnuts. So, you either go get it, or you fix it in your house.
Mayor, I'm going to echo this sentiment just for a second, but I'm also going to add that I appreciate the expediency in which we're getting this information out to the citizens. I know that it feels like there's a break every second of every day, and I think that it's because we're all aware of where they all are. And I know that I'm not saying that to discount the fact that they happen, but we all know where they are, and we all know what's happening, just about up to the minute of what the progress is on those. And I just think that where we were three years ago in terms of what the public knew about what was happening in breaks, and where we are today is 180 degrees, and I appreciate that.
Right, thanks Commissioner. Now, I know our police officer are out there in and out in the same weather, many times trying to connect some of our workers, because they're in precarious situations with the roadways and all. And that's, you know, that's 24 hours a day, every day. Our fire department fought several fires and all that. You know, our public safety, police department, the best anywhere in America. We're blessed in Ashland, Kentucky. And you put utility workers and all that together, and the people in this building, it's a pretty good place for us to work, and a pretty good community to live in. We're still going to keep fighting for you, trust me on that. Anybody else? Thank you, guys. City Manager?
Pretty much two things I was going to mention, Mayor. I did want to also say that in addition to water distribution, there were other crews over out there, wastewater collection, who are actually repairing a couple of lines because, as the Mayor mentioned, they had exceeded their time, time to safely operate. So, the water plant, all the other city employees, to me, is a great example of teamwork in situations that we want to be in. I say this sincerely, I think our water distribution may be the best in the country at fixing these, because they've had a lot of practice. I'd like them to be less efficient on it in the future when we tackle this long-term issue. Social media, Commissioner Clark mentioned that. I do want, in case you did miss it, the city's Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter accounts are all up and running now, so please, you can look for the official city of Ashland site on Facebook if that's your preference, and you can link in whichever of those that all of them or none of them, whatever you feel compelled to use. Did want to emphasize that. That's all I have.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. Okay. At this point, I mean, some public participation. And if you'd like to address the board commissioners, we'd ask you to limit your comments to five minutes or less, and give us your name and address when you come up, and we'll be very respectful of you if you do the same to us.
Good afternoon. Sorry about that. I'm Whitney Lowe with Ashland Emotion. We're located at 1509 Winchester Avenue.
Thanks all for all you're doing, Whitney.
Well, thank you. And I'm here today to thank the Commission, Mayor, and city staff for the generous grant that we received in 2017 of $5,000 that was utilized to help benefit 29th Street businesses that had been negatively impacted by construction. I know last month that Board President Wes Thompson spoke to the Commission about the intentions of the campaign and how that could apply, and I'm here today to follow up with additional information regarding the end result and the overall impact of the campaign. Ashland Emotion utilized city funds to aid in the marketing and promotion of the 29th Street campaign via media agents, WSAZ, iHeart Media, Kinder Communications, The Daily Independent, and Facebook. And as you may have read in The Daily Independent this morning, the campaign raffle, which was also supported by Bill Ashland, elicited 2,103 qualifying submissions and generated $37,445 in revenue for participating businesses. We are grateful to the city for entrusting this organization with the task of advocating for 29th Street businesses and allowing us to expand our reach in the city. So, we sincerely thank you, and I'm here to answer any questions that the Commission may have regarding the campaign.
We thank you for stepping up and taking the initiative. We really appreciate it. It's really, it's been great help.
It was very much our pleasure. While I'm here, I would like to promote an event that we have coming up. It's the Gravy Bowl on Saturday, February 10th, from 10 to 2, and that's at Park Place. We challenge the community, I say challenge, we want you to bring on your best gravy recipe. It's a biscuit and gravy cook-off event. And so, we encourage all local organizations, businesses, and restaurants to get involved. We are still accepting registrations for this event. The entry fee is only $25, and it supports future Ashland Emotion initiatives. We think it's going to be a really fun day. We're going to have football games and activities to go along with our biscuit and gravy tasting. If you have any more questions about that or would like more information?
Where is that at?
It's at Park Place.
We will.
We're involved in current programs. It's a gravy, gravy, gravy.
You have to make a reservation. I want to know what time Commissioner Gook makes it.
No reservation needed, no. No reservation needed. And we have more information on our website, which is ashlandemotion.org, and of course, our Facebook page is also a great place for, to find information about the Gravy Bowl and all of our upcoming events and initiatives. Thank you.
Very proud of Ashland Emotion, thanks.
Thank you very much, thanks.
My name is Carleen Carver. My address is 3901 Blackburn Avenue. And I am talking to you today as a citizen, a volunteer, a disability advocate, and the project manager for the proposed Century Garden National Central Park. Most importantly, I'm talking today as a mother with a child diagnosed with autism spectrum disorder. Autism spectrum disorder is a diagnosis treated by one in every 68. According to the United States Census Bureau in 2016, Ashland, Kentucky's population is 21,038. So, using that information, we can estimate that we have a population of 309 individuals diagnosed with ASD. This is just with autism. There are other targeted groups that have compromised sensory systems such as cerebral palsy, sensory processing disorder, ADHD, and ADD. Sensory gardens are therapeutic gardens that stimulate one or more systems through strategically-placed hardscape and landscape elements. These gardens are not only beneficial to those in targeted communities, but provide a therapeutic approach to anyone in need of healing or stress relief. So, our proposed sensory garden requires a 100 by 100 to 150 foot location. Depending on the final selection of plants, herbs, and landscape elements, the area would need direct sunlight for four to eight hours with some shade tolerated. The location's additional requirements would need even terrain accessibility, no intense sensory inputs such as train tracks or stadiums, no nearby waterfronts such as our riverfront location, and the opportunity for pure plain social inclusion. These prerequisites are all found in Central Park. This addition also allows us the best opportunity to adhere to the ADA garden guidelines. This project is privately funded proposal, and no city funding is being requested. The only capacity of city involvement being requested is that the location be provided with proper lighting and that the utility cost of that garden be provided by the city. Central Park already having abundant lighting is another recommended feature for that location. This project is in collaboration with Bill Ashland, the Southern Hills Gardening Club, Buddy's Center Exchange, and Pathways. Buddy's Center Exchange accepts full responsibility of routine maintenance that would be provided by a volunteer committee responsible for cultivation, cleaning, reporting damages, and maintaining the sensory garden. If one or more of these own profits are dissolved or withdraw support, Pathways has considered transferring the project to their responsibility. A full commitment because of a concern that was brought to us, board members change. I cannot guarantee you the same board members will be there in 10 years. But as of now, Pathway stands fully behind this project. The seasonal planning allows opportunity for service projects to local groups such as the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts. The seasonal cultivation allows the opportunity to contribute to our community kitchen. The clippings and the compost will be returned to the garden for fertilization. The garden has minimal ongoing costs after construction, and these costs are fully accepted by Buddy's Center Exchange. The sensory garden has been denied by the Parks Board, and we ask today that the Board of Commissioners overrule this decision so that we may begin planning and blue printing and applying for grants for this project. A lot of tri-state and Kentucky grants have upcoming deadlines, so every day we delay this project, we are losing valuable funding. We have a unique opportunity to represent disabled children in this community and showcase the hearts of our city. The copy of the city sensory garden proposal has been emailed to each of our Commissioners. If anyone did not receive that proposal or has additional questions, I am here to answer.
Carver? Carleen Carver?
Carver.
Okay. I know I got an email that the Park Board has probably not met. I guess it's electronic among themselves. Mr. Murray, I don't think a final decision on anything's been made yet.
I believe, sir, what they were looking at was alternative to Central Park at this point, so, but you're right, I don't think there was a final.
Mr. Carver, what kind of space do you need?
I need 100 by 100 to 150 foot location with sunlight that can be reached for four to eight hours. Shading is allowed for most of the plants on our garden list, but I cannot make a final garden list without a location in mind. So, that's another reason the Southern Hills Garden Club comes into place. We need our location before we can make final plant choices.
Yeah. Could it be along the pathway? There's a head, be 100, 150. Central Park's not any bigger, it gets smaller, and every time we're doing something there, just in all honesty. I was on Park Board for 40, 40 years, and chairman of the last time. We try to protect green spaces the best we can, and I was over specially ed for over 15 years in the school system before the onset of identification, you know, autism, which, you know, we were in our early stages of dealing with many, many kids, so, I would look back around there. I was just thinking in terms of a linear, you know, along the walkway in a boat shaded and some, you know, which is pretty well shaded in there through the park, and that's just off the top of my head. I just want it to be a linear garden as opposed to 100, 150 feet.
Location can be reconstructed. It's Central Park's location that is.
I understand. You probably wouldn't know this, but everybody wants something in Central Park. Every, I mean, I've dealt, we dealt with so many. So, when you're on the Park Board, you know, one of the primary tenets is to protect Central Park, that you're damaging Central Park company that way at all, but just protect the green space. My recommendation would be to work with Mr. Murray, and I'm sure the Park Board's going to have a meeting very soon. I can't work with him on grants and, I mean, about timelines and all that, but you really need to sit down with them and show them, and if, I don't know what their final decision will be, but I think if you had options for them, to me, you would, a pathway through Central Park that's already there, in a very well pre-studied area, and I don't know all the plants either that you're going to use that do need some sunlight, it could really work well for both parties and for all purposes. It belongs to 21,138. We like to say 22, okay? Another ten on the Park Board is, it's everybody's yard in Ashland. And so, that's another reason to protect it. No matter how good the intentions are and how sound and important the group is, it's still something wrong to all our citizens. But I think if you had some options for the Park Board, you may be able to reach an agreement. I don't know for sure. But I'm thinking in terms of kids walking through and being able to deal with the sensory's and the tactile of plants and what kind they are and how they smell, and so, a linear park through there might be a great idea. That's just, you know, more saying it off the top of his head, but I would try to be proactive about ways, other ways you could do that rather than 100, 150 foot space.
Hey, do you want to mention that I did meet with the Park Superintendent this morning, and that was when I received the decision that it was denied. Alternative locations that were proposed for resubmission are the 47th Street Riverfront and Olivera Park. For children with sensory issues, those both pose a major risk. With the riverfront, the leading cause of autism-related deaths is drowning. That's a statistic pulled from the National Autism Association from 2012 to 2016.
Well, that park is fenced in. Have you been to 47th Street?
Yes.
Oh, yeah? Well, it's fenced in.
I have no, I have no problem with Central Park. When you reached out to me, I went over there and walked the croquet place. It's deserted. It's ghost town, okay? They used to play croquet there. Everybody's passed away that plays croquet. And that's a fenced-in area. 100 by 140, I walked it. I have no problem with it. I used to work at Pathways with special needs kids.
I agree.
Inclusion, educationally and socially. I think it's a perfect spot. I respect the Park Board, but I don't always agree with the Park Board. It's like the Dog Park. We were voted down with the Dog Park. It was unanimous, and it was unanimous here. And so, the Dog Park's a big hit. A lot of people don't like it, but people are there every day. It's for everybody. And so, it's well-attended. So, that's where I stand on it. I am for the Central Park location.
Well, that's all well and good. I would be, again, my position would be to sit down with the Park Board and talk about the options and how you might be able to do it in Central Park where it would work well. That's all I'm saying.
It seems like to me, for years, the situation of people being used back then, it would even be used at one time was used to have people be young, be young and used. They had a situation back then where they would, what they did is have, it was like, just like one of our, it was then used as part of our.
Poor young people use it as more well-attended.
Well, I'm thinking of when we had older and younger people that were not.
I think you're right. I think the more people that use the park who are there for a good purpose, the less people who use the park who aren't.
Yeah, like that woman was shaving her legs over there in Library Commons the other night, you know?
I hate that.
Not for that. I'm against that.
I would like to see, I would like to see this resolved in a way that everybody's right, it's at least some part of what they want. Has there been a vote from the Park Board that says no, or is it just an email that says, "No, we're not going to do this"? I don't know how, I don't understand this process yet.
My understanding of this, and Mr. Murray, correct me if I'm wrong, is that they were working with Ms. Carver and representing, his final decision was not made. They were leaning towards not putting it in Central Park based on just the century and not the final details of what the rest of the 100 by 140 space would look like. My recommendation on the road ahead is that you would provide a footprint of what the total space would look like. I think that's something then, and also address, which I think you have topographically, on what the maintenance would look like. We do have precedence for ordinances, for example, the tennis center that commits the organizations to not, to not provide city resources in the future. And I, obviously, I think everybody believes that's your intent, so that is not a cost to the city. But I think the Park Board can make an official, wise recommendation that you may agree or disagree with. But I think when they have that final footprint of what that looks like, where does sensory garden go in that? Where do the other items and devices that you showed, the pictures, go in that park? I think the Park Board can make a recommendation like one of the mayor commissioners said. They, the mayor commissioners ultimately have the decision to agree with or disagree with the decision. There's precedence that they disagree with that.
Mayor, can you recognize where we had a talk one time, that, talking with the, we had people that used, and the special, special people.
Special needs.
Special needs. I thought we had that situation years ago.
Well, we, I think, excuse me, the thing that I have, when I've reached out to community members, there has been long a request for equipment and playground equipment specifically in Central Park that is beneficial to not just a segment of our population that doesn't have special considerations. And that's something that we worked on last year, and that was actually added to the budget with Mr. Murray. We actually walked around Central Park. I did, I walked with him, and we pointed out areas that had needs. And I still feel that we're deficient in that area. And I commend you for putting this forward to us and forward to the Park Board. My only question, I guess, to the Commission is, and maybe this is more to the City Manager, and I apologize for my ignorance on this, but I'm not aware of who is on the Park Board except maybe one person. Could you, do we have a list of the Park Board members?
Do we have a list?
Who are they?
E. Jeviden is the chairman of the board, and I've drawn a blank after.
Norma Meany.
Norma Meany. Bobby Manover. Stu Taylor.
Judy Gerhart.
Judy Gerhart. That's probably seven.
And does this Park Board meet in public?
Yeah, and so, the meeting, it's.
Do they need here? Oh, that's right, okay.
We have regular meetings.
But there is, at one time, we had, Ashland wrote, at least recommended or did, was in the top area to have rich, young people like.
Special needs.
Special needs people that had areas that two, two or five, two, two or three. Oh, I forgot, there were several people within 30, 34, 40, 50 or 70, quite a few that could have been, that did.
Well, there's, I know that, you know, I think, I think the mayor and commissioners are all pretty much in agreement here that we want to make sure the Park Board actually has a decision, and I'm not sure that that has, it sounds like you were told one thing, we're being told another, and what we need to do is, I would be better prepared to make a decision if I know a final decision has been made by the Park Board. So, my question, I guess, to Mr. Murray is, when does the Park Board meet again, and when does this proposal actually get considered by the board?
Typically, the Park Board meets the second Wednesday at noon at the Brown House.
Okay.
Yesterday.
So, there was an official meeting yesterday, is that correct?
No, that, that meeting was canceled for January.
Normally, in December, January, they don't meet.
That's correct.
So, they will meet the second Wednesday in February as the next regular meeting.
Ms. Carver, I think you need to take your plan and sit down with them, let them look at it, and see if you can work out.
Can we call a meeting for the Park Board since they didn't meet, and this is, I don't know if it's, if it's time-sensitive or not, I don't know when you're wanting to start.
Well, I.
Some of the grants are time-sensitive. We started the project back in November.
Well, also, if there's an, if there's an area that it has, that we need to say, we can either execute and do this as an exit, as a top.
Well, we could, I think the problem is, we can't override it. I'm not, I think.
Yeah, you can override.
Well, we can't override it if they haven't voted.
That's what I'm saying, but that's right. They can do it, but if we, if they've done it and we ride it, then we can ride it. We have the top.
Nobody doubts that. Yeah, that's right.
There's no question about that.
The public communication officer was there this morning, so maybe she can clarify. The verbiage I understood was that I had the option to resubmit with their additional request, and it was declined at this time. So, maybe she can clarify?
Mr. Murray, you think you could get the Park Board to put a special meeting together on this sensitive timeline, you're at the soon, the next few days, to have them come in? Again, I mean, they haven't even seen anything.
So, that we have some sort of answer before our next meeting?
Yeah, that'd be fine, but you, you know, they need to look at options you could work together on. I mean, they haven't even done that yet. So, and if, you're fault, you know, if we could pull a meeting together where you can, you can talk about where to go in the park, y'all might need to walk through the park for that matter, to take a look at that.
Site study.
Well, we have a phone vote, correct? Phone votes.
Correct, sir.
Okay.
But is that technically officially a meeting?
No, sir, it's by, I just called them.
They need to have a meeting.
But they also asked to look at other options, which Ms. Carver's addressed, why she opposes those. But again, I would just ask that you stay open-minded on those. I mean, there's challenges with all sites, including Central Park, ambulances for, you know, sensory, and I know that you've addressed that, how to mitigate that.
I know.
So, I beg you, stay open-minded. You know, can you mitigate all, just consider all of them?
If anybody, I'm sure, is acutely aware to you of those issues, and I appreciate your patience with us as we get through this.
At one time, we would have had some form, the, the, to. At, at one time, we would have had some form, uh, the, the, to, uh, had some sort of, uh, before we had this before, we've used, uh, way before, uh, meetings, we have had that type of, of, uh, in, 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 before.
Right. Been you for that.
It's been used before.
I think we have a pass forward.
Yeah, I think, yeah. We, again, we appreciate your time and, uh, look forward to having you work with Mr. Murray.
I appreciate you introducing this.
Hi, everyone. I'm Josh Blanton, live in the beautiful Henry Clay Building here in downtown Ashland. Um, representing, uh, Build Ashland first, uh, we just wanted to say, um, how much we support Carly's project. Um, obviously, we're involved in a lot of these different things, so we know, we know, and we're happy that we have a board and, and everyone that, that cares about our park and, and we love jobs sometimes, and we recognize that. But first of all, let's recognize Carly, this is exactly the type of citizen that we want in Ashland. And, um, this is a young brother that's totally, she actually, this is a nonprofit group that she totally developed herself, so, um, not easy to do. It took like six of us to build Ashland to do it. So, um, you know, she, uh, she, she's done a great thing with this. And this is, we really need to, regardless of this project, we need to reinforce that. Um, that's awesome. So, um, you know, this, this project, the reason why we support it so much, um, is, and we understand that, that there's all kinds of difficult things in the park. Um, but if you go to major cities, and you look at the parks that they have in the cities, they have some type, whether it's playground, playground equipment or sensory garden, um, they have something to that effect. And we think it's extremely important to, to do that. Now, we have to be open minded, we have to work with, with what we have, and that's extremely important. But it is our opinion that Central Park is a location for that. So, um, we just wanted to let, let everyone know we fully support that, uh, fully support, um, Carly, but we support our parks more than we support, um, the commission as well, so, that's for that. Secondly, I'm looking forward for, um, the, the Ashland Tennis Commission, and City Manager mentioned the tennis commission. Uh, the tennis commission, for those of you that, that don't know, that it was a, a very generous grant to the city by the Stuart Blazer Foundation that was built in nineteen seventy-four. Um, the tennis center is one of only two, um, but I really classify it as the only real in-board tennis facility that we have for, um, in, in this area, including Huntington, um, and many other towns. Um, the tennis center, tennis center, um, as City Manager referenced, does not operate off any tax dollars from, from the city, state, or, or, or federal government. Um, we only operate off of, of what we generate ourselves. So, as you can imagine, past few years have been pretty difficult for the tennis center. So, um, I wanted to come and represent the, the commission and just invite the community, let everyone know that we are a public facility, and we're welcome to come at any time to play tennis. Uh, we're working on several projects to make it more inclusive to everyone, youth and adults, um, to get out there and play tennis, because we have a beautiful facility that, that we really need to utilize. Thanks.
That's, that's why I pointed to the board. Josh, that's why you got appointed. Thank you for being here.
I was here last month. My name's Alan Johnson, six one six Silver Street. I was here last month, spoke to you all about bees in the city. Mr. Goodmore, you're right, I'd love to put bees on the roof. Concessions in pork.
Yeah, I got you.
Got some information here. This is Mike Crawford, local president of the bee club.
We know Mike.
Hey, Mike Crawford. There's a few new faces, but I am retired from the city's police department. It's good to see you, buddy. He asked me to come just to field any questions that you guys might have. I'm the president of the Northeast Kentucky Beekeepers Association. Our bar thing is educating the community and people and future beekeepers. Um, I'm a Kentucky certified queen breeder, uh, so I pass a lot of that and mileage on people. So, we kind of drafted up a recommendation on ordinances, or a change to the ordinance, ordinance, kind of focusing on the concerns that you had brought to them at the last meeting I was unable to attend. So hopefully, if you have any questions, I can field them for you. But like I said, the concerns that you brought up should be covered in our recommendation.
Let me just ask you, my, um, you know, my wife's interested in it. So she's on the phone the other day with this queen breeder in Elliott County, I guess.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, I referred her to, actually.
I know you did. I wanted to get that out. He referred my wife to a beekeeper. So anyway, my brother's a beekeeper in Lexington, and, you know, he's done for years in the, you know, the problem. But my wife's on the phone with this guy. I could hear him, and he's just the type of guy you want to buy your bees from, because he had every answer. But she didn't answer every question, you know, that I wanted. For instance, my next door neighbor in jeopardy, run my bees. His kid's out in the backyard playing. They're going to stain the kid. I have a hive in my backyard. You know how they, my kids have grown up, I, in my yard, anywhere from ten to twenty hives in my yard, literally fifty feet from the play area, and I, they've never been stung. Well, there's one exception, just one of my daughters stepped on one of them. Well, I guess what I want to ask is, uh, in, in a lot of these cities, uh, what, what we do sometimes, council, you know, in the past, we, we have ordinance that, is that one of the things prohibited with farm animals?
I don't know that I'd call a bee a farm animal. I don't know.
I know, but I just want people to throw in that same ordinance.
Yes.
We don't know. But there, the only thing I...
I haven't looked at the ordinance. I didn't know this was coming up, but, um, I don't know that there's a need to make any change, but I'll be glad with that.
Okay. And see, Mike, what we do a lot times, well, not a lot, but sometimes, because some cities contact us a lot for our ordinance on something.
Right.
Because they know we... But I'll have to re-admit a "we" on it, but no, the community has it. And I appreciate you bringing this. That's actually from Madison, Wisconsin, which is kind of like the model policy for beekeepers, yeah. I edited it a little bit, you know, I actually made it a little bit more restricted, but, yeah, it's actually modeled after Madison, Wisconsin.
I haven't heard of any bee problems from Madison, Wisconsin.
Right, yeah. No, I mean, maybe just, uh, beekeeping's allowed in a lot of major cities, Chicago, Washington D.C. They have bee hives in the White House. Well, you know, we're, we're animal lovers and all that, and, and whatever bee called by...
We'll review what he gave us, what we got.
Yeah. But I was going to throw out, if you guys have any questions, in the meantime, you guys know how to get ahold of me, if you have any questions, or whatever, just...
Is it legal or illegal? What, what was kind of...
It probably has to... It doesn't matter. Eventually, it'll get to us.
Yeah, I looked through the city ordinances, couldn't find anything.
I don't think there is, Mike.
He had talked to Scott. He said that there were certain sections of the city that were, that was allowed. There were other sections that wasn't.
Well, yeah.
Okay.
How often do you harvest, you know?
Uh, I harvest twice a year. That's pretty common.
Are you asking for hunting?
Yeah. There's some biscuits and sips here with you.
I guess I know what you guys do with this one. Probably the biggest honey producer in this area, I'm guessing, but you're quite good.
Well, I mean, I think, I don't think anybody's pure opposed to it. I just, safety, way, if it's legal and...
I think that one's a big thing, was you just wanted to make sure if it's, because it's still kind of up in there, whether it is legal or not, just make sure that we are doing it correctly, and nobody's violating it.
I really appreciate the information and, and the gameminds in terms of what we would need to do if we need to draft an ordinance or change ours or whatever.
We know there's problems in the city. They're in the way. We just don't know.
You're exactly right.
Thank you all. All right? We appreciate it. I really appreciate it, Mike.
Hello, my name is Leah Picker, and my address is twenty-six fifteen Moore Street, and, um...
What was your last name?
Picker. Picker. And, um, I'm here today to represent several people that are living on Dixon Street. We've been dealing with this problem about a vacant house at two zero zero eight Dixon for almost a year. And I've called Scott, and I understand that everybody's hands are tied. I went through all the protocols, talked to everybody, I guess, except the commission. So I'm here today to ask you for some help, because we don't know what to do. This house had some people move in, even though there was a sign on the door that said it was condemned. They came in, they lived there a while, they brought some pit bulls. Well, hence now, that's, that's finished and they're gone. The reason I'm mentioning that is because there was already so much trash in the front yard. I mean, this trash is blown everywhere. The neighbors are in these little hut houses, and my son and his wife are two people that live in that neighborhood. They're constantly picking up and cleaning up. The trash wouldn't be such a big deal. I mean, it blowing around is a problem, because they're trying to keep things clean, but there are rats everywhere. Not a few. We parked in this parking space, and we saw them. There's a hill behind these houses. And in the day, they are crawling up the hill. That's how bad this has become. And, um, we called sanitation, of course, the house is vacant, and I understand that it's supposed to be tied up in some kind of litigation, and I guess because it's vacant, and I don't know all the details on that, but I do know this. There are so many of them now, the people are running over them in the street. And you can't put anything out, because it's on somebody else's property. And we cooked out Last Suburban in the fall, and it was so bad, and this is the truth, this sounds impossible. My son has a grill, we have a lid on the grill. When that grill cools down, those rats come and get upon that grill. Now, this winter, before we had this really cold spell, they came and were sitting in the rose bush and on the porch. And we have called, we've talked, we've tried. Something has to be done, and we don't know what to do.
What are the rats, what are the rations in the summer night?
They're, yeah, they're coming from that house, and there is so much trash there. I mean, it's unbelievable. And they're multiplying. But what can we do? You know, sanitation says they can't do anything. And I was in Mexico, I think they'd be here today. I don't know.
Ms. Picker, let me say a couple things.
Okay.
Mr. Fulmer, is that, does the house talk about the picture I sent you the other day, that all the trash was across the driveway?
Yes, sir.
That same place. You're familiar with two thousand and eight?
Very familiar. We, we put several fines and...
We have it. Is it, is absentee landlord in Ashland?
Uh, they are non-responsive to our notices of violation, to citation.
So, Ms. Picker, we have an agenda item today, item that we talked about last meeting to give a twenty-four hour notice. And I have had a few people that own property besides him that day, that said, you know, it's, you know, it's kind of tough. Well, sometimes you have to, to use the shotgun approach to get everybody, and people like him is going to get on it anyway if any problem he might have. I had other people call me the same thing. But this will give the city full right to go on property, clean it up, put a lien against the property now. How many properties have you got liens against roughly?
Uh, number of properties, I'm not sure, but I think we're, we're well over two million dollars in liens.
And, and you know, Ms. Picker, this isn't something you, we can start by accept, you're, you're a citizen. And that's your money that's out there, the people owe us, because that two million dollars are amounts that we have been on properties all over town to try to clear up your neighborhood, and people just don't do anything about it. And a lien on property doesn't mean a whole lot. That's all we can do right now, but unless the property sells, and then we get our money before, you know, it gets anything. But we are, we're taking far more, but this commission has really gotten behind our, behind our code enforcement this year to get after these cases. And the ones where they are in town, or they, we know who they are, we're, we're getting a lot more done. But we have so many properties, we can't even get a hold of the people, as, as Mr. Fulmer said, are non-responsive. But we have an item on here that gives twenty-four hours to clean it up. And if they don't, then we, we can't do it. We can't just go on anybody's property.
I understand.
It's America. But, um, we're going to start doing that, and we're going to add, add the fee for us to go clean it, you know, to fix it up. It's going to cost a lot more than if they hadn't done it themselves.
Right.
So that helps some, but because it's a health hazard, surely we can do something for a public safety and health hazard if there's rats walking around all the time?
Health and safety seems to be paramount to this board.
Yes.
We dealt with that issue all, all...
So we need, Mr. Fulmer, we get on this tomorrow? We, we prove this today?
That's our plan, is to get on that, that particular address.
And not because you're here, but because you got a rat problem along with all this, and it's been an ongoing situation?
And your neighbors have all reported to us. We've all had pictures sent to us, we've all been contacted. I had a stop at a restaurant yesterday and tell me about Dixon Street.
I mean, it, this is, and I appreciate it so very much, because I know everybody's trying, but everybody's hands have been too tied to do anything.
Right.
And we're dreading to see springtime, and it's not just my son, it's why I'm concerned about them.
Absolutely.
But these old houses have people that are mentally challenged, physically challenged, and they, and the landlord's trying too. But his hands are tied. What can the landlord do?
Right.
Nothing, because he doesn't own that particular property. But I thank you for your time. I appreciate it. And we'd like to get rid of the rats. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Fulmer will put that top list tomorrow, if we mean it.
My name is Paula Crawford Atkins, and I reside at thirty-eight oh seven Blackburn Avenue. I'm here in support of Carly's project, uh, for the sensory garden. I have a nine-year-old special needs son with autism, ADHD, ODD, anxiety, and epilepsy. So I have a very strong passion for individuals like that. The other locations do pose, um, very potential risks. The river isn't a small body of water, even though it's fenced in. If the child were to say wander outside of that fence, you have a very large location that you're going to have to try to find that child before they hit the river, and who knows what happens. And the other location, train tracks versus an ambulance driving by. The train tracks, not only the horn, but the way the wheels roll on the tracks, that's a sensory issue. A lot of people don't see the other sounds that go along with it. There's a lot of sporting events that go on at the Oliverdale Park. There's a lot of traffic, a lot of people, and kids do have problems in large crowded areas with people hollering and screaming, cheering and clapping, things like that going on. The park does have games going on there as well. However, in the park, the proposed location they had is not a green space right now. It's, it's an unused, um, horseshoe croquet area. And that location would be key, because it would turn into a green space. And as she stated, it's no longer one in eighty-eight, it's one in sixty-eight individuals. And it wouldn't benefit just children, it would benefit older individuals who have autism and the disabilities. It would help bring our community together. As I met Carly, I found out she's actually one of my neighbors. She lives a couple houses down from me. And I met her through the Buddy Sensory Exchange. And having something like that would help bring these families together, because if you move them to a location at the Oliverdale Park or at the riverfront, they're, they're being alienated. These individuals are already alienated and aren't accepted by many. And having them in the park helps bring families together, helps connect families with others. Like myself, I'm an open book with my son. I will, I have nothing about him. He knows all of his disabilities. And he can actually tell people what he struggles with. And I've helped many families who have children who have been diagnosed to direct them in the right path. So it would also be a network for these families to get together in the park, because that is where everybody's at versus driving to a different location where isn't as, as popular or heavily populated.
So if I, if I, if I'm hearing you correctly, the, you're suggesting that you don't want them segregated?
Exactly. I feel it's, um, they would be segregated, and I, I'm an animal lover, I support the dog park. However, we have human beings with disabilities that you're wanting to segregate and stick on a riverfront or around an area that is not sensory friendly. A train, my son is a runner. If he's in overload, he will run. He wears a GPS tracker, because he went missing at school. So you have to think of every situation possible. And in the park, it's a fenced-in area versus like a linear area, it's a fenced-in area. Is that child, where in the, where to get outside of that fence? The park's heavily populated, there's a lot of people there. If a child goes missing, you're going to have everybody there helping. Versus the riverfront, it's just you or who you're with. You have to wait for help to arrive. The park is honestly the best and only solution for this, because these, these individuals shouldn't be segregated or alienated, and that is how that feels. And we are their voice, and we have to speak up for them.
Thank you very much. You're doing well.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to report a patient?
Hello, I'm Robert Fields, Fields Flower Shop, two two one fifteen Street. We're in the middle of the hotel renovation. There is a couple of items. I know I won't give answers completely, but, um, there's a four-foot area behind our building that belongs to the city of Ashland. Wondering if later on here, we might be able to purchase that, uh, four-foot area. That's how our door opens out our back exit, fire exit, whatever you would want to call it. The, um, other item would be, there's a parking space in front of our store that is now marked handicap. As time goes on, we might be looking for a loading zone there. I don't know if all the plans have been made, has the entrance and exit to the hotel? And also, has there been any talk on what is going to be going on with the alleyway? That is between the flower shop and the hotel. That is between the flower shop and the hotel?
Are we have good questions?
I didn't think that anything had been said, but I just wanted to, well, first off, if someone would look into the four-foot area behind the store, I would like to know if we could purchase that area.
And why do you think that's there, Rob?
The four-foot area behind the store, um, back in the old days, every building or group of buildings had an alleyway. Where like UPS would pull up, and you would walk down that four-foot alleyway. The alleyway goes into the city building at the end of it. Terrio's Office Machine, which is now gone, they had their entrance. Where the parking lot was, you had a lot of buildings there, before they were poured down for the hotel, way back in the eighties. All of those had doors, they went off that way. And so, the way I kind of understand it is, the alleyway was needed to who was ever at the end of the alleyway, so they would have access. Now, Terrio's has now been taken down, possibly a road put through there, so I know someone will eventually be coming to you all and trying to find out, get the deed for that four-foot area. It's four foot by, I don't know, however many feet from the alleyway to the housing building.
And you, Rob, you're just asking for four feet, with your building?
Yep, yep, that way will have, I just don't want the hotel to come in and stick a wall one foot off. Our doorway must not be able to open up.
We'll get our doors.
Someone, someone will be asking about that four-foot area in the future, and I would like to stake my claim to five-four foot.
Okay. Usually, or normally, historically counseled, if you're correct me this, I, if that was a walkway as opposed to an alley, so that could make deliveries?
It is, it is a walkway.
Alley's out in your neighborhoods, and we have a lot of citizens who, they're paper alleys now, grass grown up, and when they, if, and when they come, they all don't come down here, but for whatever reason, they'll come down and ask us to close that alley, and they all agree, everybody backs on it, to close it. People decide you have to, people decide you have to, and maintain it then.
Right.
Has there been a service walkway from the alley to the back of the house?
Rob, how long have you, has your business been in Ashland?
Uh, about eighty-some, since about 1990, 22.
We've invested a lot of time, money, resources in our community.
Yes, sir.
For that, we're grateful, we really appreciate you.
Thank you very much. Y'all have a good day.
We'll get on it, Rob.
All right, thanks.
Thanks for coming. Anyone else? Thanks for being here, old business, item A.
We're beginning swearing in.
Uh, later, after we appoint them. I've got this.
Your, your call.
Sometimes, Justin, sometimes I'm being wrong, so we'll get to do that.
Mr. Cheker. There are a lot of people here.
I'm not going to do it till we actually appoint them.
First reading on December 14th, ordinance City of Ashland, Kentucky. Authorizing directing the mayor to execute a grant agreement between the city and WB Hospitality LLC setting forth respective duties, rights, covenants, and obligations with respect to the acquisition, construction, and financing of the hotel redevelopment project.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Oppose, like sign, item B?
First reading December 14th, ordinance City of Ashland, Kentucky. Designating a handicap parking space on the west side of 16th Street in the 200 block and providing a penalty for violation of the ordinance.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Oppose, like sign, item C?
First reading December 14th, ordinance City of Ashland, Kentucky. Amending section 1, ordinance 41, series 93, which prohibited parking on portions of 8th Street, prohibit parking on the west side of 8th Street from Central Avenue, Bathe Avenue, and the city.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Oppose, like sign, item D?
First reading December 14th, ordinance City of Ashland, Kentucky. Authorizing directing the mayor to execute a contract between the city and New Tech Systems Inc. Installation, implementation, security cameras, and monitoring system for the city's water treatment plant through the Department of Engineering and Utilities.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Oppose, like sign, item E?
First reading December 14th, ordinance City of Ashland, Kentucky. Amending section 2, ordinance 106, series 2009, which adopted the 2009 edition and all subsequent editions of the International Property Maintenance Code, reducing the timeframe from 10 days to 1 24-hour period for removal of items not regularly disposed of in household trash.
Second.
And it was out of order, that was out.
Okay, that was not included.
Sorry.
We'll, we'll do it.
Someone?
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Oppose, like sign, good counsel?
This is E.
Okay, got you.
December 14th. Uh, ordinance City of Ashland, Kentucky, amending ordinance 84, series 2007, adding blighted property in the ordinance, which established criteria. Classified property is abandoned and established a separate rate of taxation at four times the annual adopted ant食 tax rate for abandoned urban property.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a comment, along with what we were talking about earlier, about this commission's dedication to dealing with these properties. I think that I'm very glad that we're working with this and saying we're not going to have these, these things in our city anymore.
I appreciate it, Commissioner. One thing I did mention earlier is, I believe the city was doing their part when I came into office. I know we're doing it this past year, we're really working hard at it, but it gets stopped, Ms. Pinker. It gets stopped somewhere from Ashland, Pittsburgh, and that's all I'll say. And people that, that can go up there and their property, you know, there's a, it's America, so there is a process where they have a chance to clean them up, and they do this and do that, and they say, they want to, they go to court and say, you know, we're working on it right now as we speak, and, okay, well, we'll give you some more time, and we're, we're the bad guy in it. And, uh, but we're still going, we're still doing it, and we're going to do it more, and these, what we're doing here is going to help us.
I'd be glad to go up there, wherever, and tell them how they're not doing it.
Get the name and number down.
Hey, I'm all about it.
You'd be a good person to go up there.
Mayor, just one comment, Mr. Pullman, correct me if my statistics are wrong on this, but to, to the compliment of the community, 8% of the code violations that get sent out get repaired. So, it's really a community that responds to them, a lot of the time there's unawareness of, of code violations, and so, you know, the compliment of the 8% that are doing, you know, the quote-unquote right thing, it's the 20% there, to your point of interest, what that, we, we need to get at.
Thanks.
And that $2 million.
And the $2 million, if we get a part of that, it'd be great.
Do not.
Do the vote. Okay. Item G?
First reading December 14th, ordinance City of Ashland, Kentucky. Authorizing the mayor to execute a contract between the city and Alken's Waste Services Inc. For removal and disposition of slugs from the city wastewater treatment plant and water treatment plant to the period of one year with the Department of Engineering Utilities.
Someone?
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Oppose, like sign, item A?
First reading December 14th, ordinance City of Ashland, Kentucky. Authorizing directing the mayor to execute a contract between the city and Mike Inyard and Sons for the installation of approximately 640 plus or minus 12-inch DIP class 56 water main and impertinences at Louisa Street at Catalystburg in the amount of $99,708.65, Department of Engineering and Utilities Division of Water Distribution.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Oppose, like sign, item A?
First reading, uh, December 14th, ordinance City of Ashland, Kentucky. Authorizing approving change order 1 between the city and Tri-State Construction and Enterprises LLC increasing contract amount by $4,768 with a contract for the city's new water distribution wastewater collection facility.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Oppose, like sign, old business?
Yes, Mayor, you discussed it last meeting, and had a consensus to approve the request of the sign appeal. The sign's up, as you probably noticed, so we might want to take a note of it. Uh, it was an appeal from, um, uh, the department, and it was a request to place a wall mounted sign, Planet Fitness, on their, uh, location over in, uh, Midtown Shopping Center. We need a motion and a vote.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Um, this is a great part of this job, uh, help get to the consent agenda, consent agenda.
I guess I'm not.
Why not, I just said go ahead. Reconsent agenda, I want to get these guys up.
All right, into the consent agenda. Resolution City of Ashland, Kentucky, adopting, authorizing, and approving course of action presented by the city manager on the items appearing on the consent agenda for the regular meeting, Board of City Commissioners, January 11, 2012.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Okay. If I could have, uh, Adam L. Daniels come up, please? And his mother Debbie, uh, his wife Jill, and her mother Linda, they come up? No, I'm glad you're here today. What school do you go to? Can we call him? I'd be after you if I still served the temple, and we could lose money on you today. This kid. He's very proud moments for us, because number one, our police department is unbelievable, risk their life every day when they leave the house to protect us, protect and serve, we're proud of every one of them. And when they're with us and get promotions, it's a great day for all of us. More responsibility, uh, more on him, be better trained. Chief, I never get a chance to say much like this, but you're doing a heck of a job, since you've been the chief. And I get this from your officers, it's a great, great honor. So, uh, and. Hi? Oh, your name? Please say, I'll tell you.
I am Dave.
You do swear that you will well and truly discharge your duties as the officer sergeant of the City of Ashland, Kentucky according to the best of your skill and judgment, and that you will not knowingly or willingly commit any malfeasance of office and will faithfully execute the duties of your office without favor, affection, or partiality, so help the God. Congratulations, and thank you for everything, thank you. And I want to have Robert O. Simpson, please come up, and we'd like to have Missy and Kyle and Megan.
I, Robert O. Simpson.
Do swear that you will well and truly discharge your duties as the officer lieutenant of the City of Ashland, Kentucky according to the best of your skill and judgment, and that you will not knowingly or willingly commit any malfeasance of office and will faithfully execute the duties of your office without favor, affection, or partiality, so help the God. I do. Good luck, Lieutenant. And we're in town, and they introduce, a lot of times they introduce their police department, their chief for their group of them, they say, uh, Ashland's finest, or Pittsburgh's finest, trust me, they're, we're a small-town America, anywhere you put these police in, in any city. But through here, we're blessed, we're blessed, we're second to none, our police officers are second to none, and we appreciate everyone. And appreciate the sacrifice and making for our behalf every day. Okay, uh, new business, item A?
Ordinance City of Ashland, Kentucky. Authorizing directing the mayor to execute an agreement between the city and CC Price Land Company regarding leasing of parking spaces on the city's own parking lot at 15th Street and Green Avenue.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Oppose, like sign, item B?
Ordinance City of Ashland, Kentucky. Authorizing directing the mayor to execute an agreed order between the city and Commonwealth of Kentucky Energy and Environmental Cabinet Division of Enforcement authorizing the payment of civil penalty in the amount of $4,500.
Someone?
Dean, second.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Oppose, like sign, item C?
Ordinance City of Ashland, Kentucky. Authorizing directing the mayor to execute a contract between the city and Dixon Engineering Inc. in the amount of $46,760, accepting their proposal to provide engineering and inspection services for coating, painting, and repairing the 1 million gallon steel reservoir Catalystburg Water Storage Tank through the Department of Engineering and Utilities.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Oppose, like sign, item D?
Ordinance City of Ashland, Kentucky. Authorizing directing the mayor to execute task order number 22 between the city and Strand Associates Inc. Regarding the annual combined sewer overflow report for the Department of Engineering Utilities in the amount of $12,000.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a quick explanation, so it's for the public.
Yes, uh, thank you, Commissioner, this basically enables, uh, our annual combined sewer overflow report, which we've been doing since 2005, uh, it's required by the state division of water, and it's, uh, not to exceed $12,000.
Okay, um. All favor?
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Okay, um. Good. Item E, I'm sorry.
All right, ordinance City of Ashland, Kentucky. Amending section 2, ordinance 70, series 2017. Commonly known and referred to as budget ordinance of the city.
Someone?
Second.
Any discussion?
Second, thank you, if we could just have a brief?
Thank you, Commissioner, uh, three, three items on this, basically this creates a special revenue fund to account for tip money which was derived from bond sales. Uh, second point is that police were reimbursed from, uh, area-wide protective, uh, organization for overtime. The third, uh, recognizes the fire department received a $2,000 grant from their bond, which is easier tools and equipment, so just make sure that.
All favor?
Aye.
Oppose, like sign, item A?
Ordinance City of Ashland, Kentucky. Authorizing directing the mayor to execute a contract between the city and Morris Contract Inc. for the Ford Terrace Concrete and Handrail Project in the amount of $218,642 with the Department of Community and Economic Development through the Housing and Urban Development, Community Development Program.
No motion?
Second, but I have a question.
Sure.
Is there just a mistake on the credit agenda? No, I'm sorry. No, I'm in the wrong place.
All favor?
Aye.
Oppose, like sign, excuse me, second, item G?
Ordinance City of Ashland, Kentucky. Authorizing approving change order 2 between the city, Ashland Furnish Company, and Ashland Child Development Center. The contract regarding installation of, uh, HB Air Conditioning System at 1526. installation of, uh, HV air conditioning system at fifteen twenty-six and fifteen thirty-eight Central Avenue, increasing the amount of the contract by three thousand one hundred forty-eight dollars for the Department of Community and Economic Development through the Housing and Urban Development Community Block Grant.
Salute.
Second.
My, my only question, Mr. Paul, would be, you know, on a job like this, where, where do we miss, where'd they miss out on, I know that's the CVG, but where'd they miss out on thirty-one hundred dollars?
It, it was a sort of a complex project, there were a lot of new things in place, and, and, you know, you could oversee so much of that from the outside.
They, they specifically found some deteriorating conduit wiring, to Mr. Paul's point, that they didn't predict as part of the original bid, so this fixes it.
Gotcha. Oppose, like sign. Excuse myself. Out of M. A.
Ordinance City of Ashland, Kentucky, amending ordinance twenty-six, series sixty-seven, as amended by ordinance ninety-two, series eighty-seven, relating to depositories of public funds for the city in order to update the deposit.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Out of M.
Take a breath here. Ordinance, ordinance City of Ashland, Kentucky, adopting the replacement job description for the positions of finance director and assistant finance director in the Department Finance Division of Administration, adopting the replacement job descriptions for the positions of superintendent, mass transit secretary, bus driver, relief bus driver, maintenance worker three, maintenance worker two, maintenance worker one, all in the Division of Mass Transit, transferring the Division of Mass Transit from the Department of Public Works to the Department of Finance, adopting the replacement job description for the position of director of public works, amending the authorized positions to reflect the change in the departments for the Division of Mass Transit of the Policies and Procedures Compensation Plan and Classification Plan as adopted by ordinance fifty-one, series two thousand seventeen, as previously indicated.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Out of J.
Ordinance City of Ashland, Kentucky, adopting the revised job description for position corporation counsel, full-time position, and the revised job description for the position of assistant corporation counsel, as a part-time position in the Department of General Government, Division of Legal, and amending the authorized positions of the Policies and Procedures Compensation Plan, Classification Plan, as adopted by ordinance fifty-one, series two thousand seventeen, as previously indicated.
Second.
Any discussion?
The only, the only question I have is, uh, based on this change, are we looking at, did we use, financially, what's the impact on compensation versus the way we currently are compensating our legal department?
This, uh, thank Commissioner, so, uh, compensation, looking at a full-time corporation counsel versus potentially a part-time, uh, corporation counsel could have financially beneficial benefits to the city.
Do we have the, do we have this idea of what that would be?
I do know that the, uh, the rated position, um, based on the classification and compensation study, uh, would definitely depend on who we hire as a full-time corporation counsel based on the, the departure of, uh, Mr. Benson.
What's the range?
Uh, the range of that is eighty-seven thousand to a hundred and thirty-four thousand, I think, I need to pull it up.
Cause my only question is, cause we met yesterday, and one of the things we talked about was, the biggest liability to the city is pension, and, um, something I had talked to, uh, folks from other cities, that they, they actually contract out some of their legal departments, so they actually avoid having to pay pension and benefits.
Yes.
And I know that's one of the angles, has that been researched?
That's an excellent point, there are, um, just a little bit, the, the research I've done, Somerset, Frankfurt, Bowling Green, Richmond, Lexington, all have gone to this type of, uh, uh, model in the past five or seven years, they've all stayed with that. Covington has a city solicitor who also serves as the assistant city manager, and Georgetown is a city attorney, who does as the chief of staff. Um, but I have no, no evidence says that that's not, not been a negative thing in those communities, they continue to get toward that, I've done my research through KLC, Mr. Paul. Did that answer your question?
Uh, other than just not really knowing what the pension liability would be?
My, I, but I think the other, I think that's what this does for the city, is that we open us for this position for, um, to be advertised, um, if, if and when a qualified candidate comes in and qualifies for that position, we look to him or her to advise both me and also the mayor and commissioners on what the assistant, uh, corporate counsel looks like. Is that something that, and Mr. Mark can, can address us also, but is that something that needs to continue to be an assistant, uh?
Have you been in council with the legal department to establish this ordinance? Have you, have you got advice from the department? So, John has helped you craft this?
I have John, both, uh, Mr. Vincent and Mr. Sennett have been part of schedules with the ordinance.
I'm gonna vote no on it simply because I, I need to discuss and review more, and get each of yours opinions of how the legal department should look, uh, and that's the one problem I have with, in case you are interested in that something. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Yes. Out of, oppose? Okay, uh, we're getting ready to go into executive session, but, uh, the next meeting on the twenty-fifth is gonna be at noon. It's scheduled to be in the evening, so we're, we're gonna.
Would you like me to make a motion to change that meeting?
I do.
You can go on.
You do, thank you very much. Assistant counsel.
Sorry.
Yeah, I think, I think I polled everybody, and they got back to me that it was okay. In fact, I think what he really said was great, everybody, not just you, Commissioner, you, everybody felt the same way, but anyway, yes.
Yes, I, I'd like to make a motion that we change the meeting, the next meeting to noon, uh, instead of the six o'clock meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I was not gonna be able to be there, if you want to, that's, and I don't wanna miss meetings, so, but, but you have to do that, I appreciate it, very much. We're gonna go into executive session to discuss personnel matters and potential litigation. Those are the only two subjects will be discussed, no vote will be taken, we come back out, we're gonna adjourn the meeting, so, uh, we're glad you're here, and come back often, and give us your input, uh, or whatever, and, thanks. Let's, record reflect, we, we turned at two-ten P.M., only, uh, personnel and/or potential litigation was discussed, and no votes were taken. Do we have anything on the floor?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion on the agreement that we move the agreement to a grade one-twelve, um, and follow the personnel policy, please.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Motion to adjourn to the noon meeting on the twenty-fifth.
Amen.